Looks like all of us board members are here and present. Next, we need to talk about the approval of the agenda.
One second.
I have one change to make. I'd like to switch item number nine and 10 with each other. We could just do the manager and council reports in item 10 because we'll be going into closed session, then we don't have to come back to an open meeting again. So is that okay for us to do that?
Yeah.
Adjourn the meeting. So that's the only change I have. Anybody else have any other changes? We're just moving item number nine to the 10th spot, item number 10 to the ninth spot. That's all. Any other changes or to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye. Aye. None opposed. So, public hearing, item 3A, a minor plan amendment to add Round Lake to the In-Lake alum treatment. Harry.
We can't hear Mr. Jeffrey.
All right. So at the time, the City of Eden Prairie had been doing their own treatment on it, but they had been trying to avoid dosing at a level that would require buffering of it. And that buffering adds a significant cost to it. But on the flip side, it meant that because they were dosing at a lower level, the amount of substrate that was actually being bonded wasn't as great. So Mr. Bishop had put forward a plan, task order of dosing rate that he would propose. One second, please, and I'll open it up. So. Maybe it will go. All right. Well, that might page down. Let's do it. Oops. Sorry. I made it go away. I'll try that again. There we go. So it was first dose in 2012. At the time, that was, all they really had was the GPS tracking. They know the dose, the amount they've spread. They get a pretty good idea of the area that was treated by the GPS tracking, so it could calculate what the dosage was. In October of 2018, it was done again, a little larger dose, but a little larger area. So the gallons per acre was actually less. But in both cases, they were below what Mr. Bishop would recommend for dosing of Round Lake. So Mr. Bishop, looking at the data, it is still meeting water quality standards for all things, but just hovering right around that. But more so what he saw was that increase in the hypolymniatic release of phosphorus starting to creep back up again. So he is proposing to dose it at a higher rate, but we would be buffering it with that. It does, in the resolution, we do talk about, our plan does talk about the use of in-lake treatment. The City of Eden Prairie, it's a high-value lake to them for recreational purposes. So going back again, water quality, we are seeing the TP trending down in the wrong direction, but Chlorophyll A, Secchi, and TP all still meet the state standard since the 2018 application. Sediment release is still pretty low, but hypolymnic phosphorus is increasing, exceeded 400 micrograms per liter in 2023. So he wants to dose, achieve that 100 grams of aluminum per meter squared. And if you remember the earlier doses, we were looking at around 15 grams. So significantly greater dose, but because of the increased dose, it should improve the longevity. The cost, this has been budgeted for and will be reimbursed by the City of Eden Prairie. The cost is estimated 25,000 to 50,000 plus mobilization. There is some gray area because of tariffs that have gone on in aluminum and how that will impact that, but we have 65,000 budgeted for it. And again, it will be reimbursed by the city. So we do have available funds to treat this by doing a buffered treatment that allows us to go at a higher dose. So that's really it. The questions that remained after the last meeting would be, is this something then that the city is going to, or that the district will be taking on moving forward? At this point, we are only looking at doing this dose, and we'll turn it back, responsibility back to the city to do it. If, if again, we have another situation like this where we are doing another, you know, one of the reasons that we felt it would be good to incorporate into our project is we were already doing Lotus Lake, Lotus Lake required, or sorry, yeah, Lotus Lake required buffering, Rice Marsh Lake, and Rice Marsh Lake required buffering. So we get the added value of one project and being able to buy it in bulk and pass that savings along. So we are recommending that this project moves forward. Mr. Bishop's recommending that the project move forward. Tonight is the public hearing, so we need to take comment from the public on this project and consider those comments in any decision the board makes. I do have then the authorization on the regular agenda after this.
Mr. Grabden, you have a question?
When you say buffering, what does that mean?
President Pedersen, managers. So, Mr. Maxwell, if I get this wrong, please step in. But so when you dose aluminum sulfate, you will change the, you will reduce the pH, make it more acidic. And so some lakes are naturally buffered, so it won't go as acidic. It'll stay in that healthy range for aquatic vegetation, aquatic organisms. But some lakes do not have that natural buffer, this being one of the lakes, Rice Marsh Lake. It's typically shallow lakes that don't have it or smaller lakes. So we add a buffer to it to keep that pH from sinking too low or getting too acidic.
Okay.
I believe Mr. Cook has a.
Yes. Mr. Cook.
Thank you. My name's Larry Cook, 471 Big Horn Drive, Chan Hassan. Although this might be a good project, I want to note that from the record, it does not appear that the appropriate time periods and notices and approvals have been provided, which violates stat, not only statutes, but our own plan. And so this should be put off until our statutes and plan have been complied with and not done until that in fact happens. And just to confirm, as my understanding is, Eden Prairie is going to be paying the whole cost of this part. Correct me if I'm wrong. And also, this is not otherwise in our budget. There's no process for amending the budget. This should be put into the 2026 budget in accordance with the applicable statutes. So those, well, and then my final comment is, I've made this before, you know, the managers do not fairly represent the various hydrologic areas. And therefore, as I stated before, our view is that you do not have the authority to take any actions with respect to the district. So that finishes my, my comments.
Do we have anyone else in the public who would like to make a comment at this time?
Should open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought manager or Mr. Welsh did that. So, um, like to open the public hearing?
It's effectively open.
Thank you.
Okay. Should I begin?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is Tom Lindquist. I live on 16750 Baywood Terrace in Eden Prairie on the east side of Duck Lake. And I'd like to make a few brief comments from what I tuned into with the workshop discussion that just took place regarding.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Lindquist. We're only on the public hearing for Round Lake alum amendment.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. Okay.
When we get down to public interest in a little bit, come back to us.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a public comment on the Round Lake alum amendment? Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
In light of the fact that the hearing hadn't been opened, I'd like to have my comments that I made prior to the opening of the public hearing be made part of the record of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
They will.
Anything else? We have no other comments? So?
President Pedersen, managers, Mr. Cook actually brought it to light, and Mr. Welsh had pointed out, yeah, it's not on the agenda. And the reason being that the statutory obligated timeframe for review will not be met by tonight's meeting. So it will be actually at the May meeting that the motion we brought forward to authorize the project. So the window doesn't close until, I believe, the 20th of this month.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey. Okay, I believe that ends the public comments on the Round Lake in-Lake alum treatment. Our next item on the public hearing portion is the cost lake, or the cost share agreement with Prairie View Retail LLC. Little bit of background, Mr. Jeffrey?
President Pedersen, managers, we, we brought this to the board last month and discussed it a little bit. I am actually going to turn it over to Staff Mahon to discuss. She has worked well with, with the applicant and their representatives, who is also present tonight, should there be any questions.
Great. Welcome.
Oh, she's got to wait for it to turn green. Yeah, it takes some time. I don't know why that one doesn't just turn on, but.
Okay. Um, if you can't hear me, I guess, let me know. So the Prairie View Center project is a cost share agreement that we, was first brought to us last summer. Just a bit of overview, the Prairie View Center is a business park in Eden Prairie. It's part of the Purgatory Creek watershed. And the property owner is actually Prairie View Retail LLC. So previous versions of the agenda and cost share listed United Properties. They control the Prairie View Retail LLC. So we've updated the agenda and the agreement at the advice of Smith Partners to reflect that Prairie View Retail LLC is the owner of the property. And the project will be installed by Timberland Outdoor Services, which already currently provides lawn and winter maintenance for the site. The total project cost is $115,082. And they additionally received an opportunity grant from Hennepin County. So the grant review committee has reviewed this application. We recommended a 50% cost share with a maximum award of $50,000. So this is the project location. It's off Highway 212 and 494. The water body at the very bottom of the screen, there's the Purgatory Creek Recreation Area. And then just a closer look at the project area. There's a few different components to the project. So one and two are the north rain gardens. Three at the bottom there is the south rain garden outside of the Chase Bank. Number five is a pollinator habitat restoration area. And then item four is a horizontal bore that will go underneath the parking lot to redirect rainwater into the pollinator habitat area. Breakdown of some of the components, the north rain gardens up top, together roughly about 4,400 square feet. There are six downspouts that drain off of the north side of that building into, they empty over 17,000 square feet of roof water. So four of those six downspouts will be redirected into these two rain gardens. And then the soil that's excavated from the installation of the rain gardens will be repurposed within the habitat restoration area. And all of their, all of the designs are also in the agenda as well. So this is just a few snapshots of them. The south rain garden down below beneath, beneath Chase Bank is another thousand-square-foot rain garden. All of the plants, the plant lists have been reviewed by the grant review committee. We did have some changes that we recommended to, we, the grant review committee met with Ben, the project lead for Timberland, the designer of the project, made some change, recommendations for changes to the plant list, and they were very receptive. So all the plant lists are in the agenda packet as well. All have been deemed appropriate for the site. And then that directional bore, so it's a horizontally bored, bored PVC pipe that will be directed, so those last two downspouts from the north end of the building. So the other four were going into the rain gardens. The last two will be directed through this horizontal bore. The four into the rain gardens, at the end of the rain gardens, will also be connected to this bore underneath. And then it'll be connected into, it'll go all the way across into that pollinator habitat on the right side of the design. And then that last piece of the project is that pollinator habitat. It's a one-acre site, currently infested with weeds, invasive species, buckthorn, Canada thistle. So they'll remove all the invasive species. I think they have, yeah, 64 pounds of seed mix that they'll use that are, have been deemed appropriate for the site conditions. There's something like 1,100 plants that'll be used across the pollinator habitat and those three rain gardens. The berms here are constructed from that soil that was excavated from the rain gardens. And then they have a maintenance plan that will be, so the project will be maintained until the plants are established and then for 10 years until in perpetuity. Yeah, it's a really great project. We were really excited when they came to us with this. They've been super receptive to all of the feedback that we've had for it. It's got some great project outcomes, effectively managing over 336,000 gallons of water off those roofs. It will reduce their need for salts by reducing the, the downspouts that are currently going over the parking lot. It'll be by redirecting them into the rain garden into that boring underground, reduce the flow of contaminants from the parking lot, and also provide that essential habitat for the pollinators over there. So we were really excited about this project, and we hope you will consider that $50,000 cost share agreement.
Stephanie, can you go back two slides, please? So one of the things managers, I think, is important to note, one of the ancillary benefits, and she touched on it in the chloride reduction in her bullet point. So if you look at all of that cross-hatched area north of where it's, where the directional drilling is going, that's all sheet flow across, and it's, it's the northern exposure, so it doesn't get sunlight. So that's where the chloride benefit is coming from, because right now that ices up because it sheet flows over it. If you can go to the next slide, please.
Ask question on that bore?
Yeah.
Is it, how deep is it?
Directional bore? I'm going to look at a step. It was four feet.
I'm just, you know, Minnesota winter, just curious how that, if that four inches works. That's, that's curious.
Yeah, I mean, part of the man's agreement will be to ensure that the conveyance is, is working. So the, the next habit, or it even shows here. So one of the things that I really liked about this applicant was their willingness to come in and talk with Stephanie and myself and make adjustments to the plan. So originally, you know, they didn't have under drains in the rain garden. They put those in so that we could make sure that we're getting all the water to go there. And where you see in the, right where the discharge point is, where the daylights in wetland, we asked them to put in a 4B for it, which they did. And then they changed the grading, if you go to the next slide, changed the grading within it to, to add some, some contours, so it wasn't just direct flow straight across in and out of it. So the, so the applicant was, was very receptive to ideas, and I was really encouraged about his willingness to, to modify his plans by suggestions from the committee.
Thank you. Any questions from the managers?
So just like to make a comment, it seems like this is a, really an ideal project that we should be embracing with our arms to, and encouraging any commercial developer or redeveloper to figure out how we can just quickly say, this is, this is ideal. This is something we should be doing. And it's a great project.
I concur. I think it's fabulous. I'm so happy to see it. It's a great thing. Yes.
Is that, so the, the plants are all going to be truly native plants?
Yes.
I just don't think generally those particular nurseries, but.
Yep. There was some hostas. I believe that we do allow in the rain gardens, but everything else, yes, I believe, was fully native.
Any other comments here before we go to the public?
So one quick comment. I guess you could always add a heater to the drain in case, or maybe it's easy enough to put it in after the fact, too.
Wouldn't be running in winter anyway.
Yeah, they should.
There shouldn't be much running in winter, but it seems like there will be situations where the ground is frozen and the surface is not. So.
I commented on it because we have a six-inch drain that goes under lawn, and in the spring, there's a period where it overflows.
Yeah. Are you thinking of the shrink swell of the?
Didn't know when this was going to, is it mostly useful for summer to get the water off and?
Yeah. Primarily for summer work. There have been several studies done on the efficacy of rain gardens in winter months, and they do find that there is some, still some infiltration that goes on in the winter months, but primarily the flow is going to be, yeah, spring and summer.
It was a curiosity. I'm very supportive of the project.
Okay, so I'd like to open to public comments at this point?
President Pedersen, managers, I would like to, one point of clarification.
Yes.
We fall into a habit, I do it as well, of calling it a grant, but it's, it's a stewardship partnership that we're, we have.
Thank you.
There's still cost shares.
Any public questions? It looks like Mr. Cook? He apparently. He's muted. You're muted. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. Sorry about that. My name's Larry Cook, 471 Big Horn Drive, Chan Hassan. My comments on this, although I think it's, it's a good idea to have this kind of project, my concern is, is that I don't think we should be, if I read it right, we should be funding basically 90% of a project. I think, I thought we had caps, and applying those caps, we need to take into account, you know, any other public monies that people get. And I think that the total amount is between Hennepin and this district should be capped at our maximum percentage or maximum amount. And my rough calculations would state that if, if the numbers is right, our contribution should be capped at something around $29,000. And I think the reason for that always is we want to make sure that applicants had skin in the game, a reason to make sure that this works for, in fact, the 10-year period of time. So I think we should not be approving that full amount, but it should be something less than that, that falls within the parameters. And I would just say the Hennepin County should reduce any contribution that we would otherwise make pursuant to our program. And then finally, I'd have to say that, again, I object to holding these hearings for the reasons I've said before, because I don't believe the managers have the authority to make these decisions. With that, I'm finished. Thank you very much.
Any other public questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. So I believe that concludes our.
We have one.
Marilyn?
Mr. Lindquist?
Yes. Is it okay to make a comment now on the workshop that preceded this meeting?
Uh, no, we're not there yet. We're still working on the public hearing section.
Okay.
Thank you. Marilyn, do you have a question or comment?
Um, no, I guess the plants are being supplied by M&amp;L, and I'm sure that they're going to be neonicotinoid-free from M&amp;L. And the seeds, is the watershed doing a maintenance agreement as well?
I thought they were coming from Gertens?
What was that?
I thought they were like Bachmann's and so.
There was a few different places that they're being, that the plants are being procured from. I believe M&amp;L was one of them, as well as, I think Bachmann, Bachmann's and Gertens.
Okay.
There was a 10-year maintenance agreement.
Yep. So, yeah, they will be signing a 10-year maintenance agreement declaration.
So just knowing that Bachmann's is now working with M&amp;L, so probably the reason why you're seeing that as a combo is because they're also selling plant materials for M&amp;L. So that's it.
I wasn't familiar with that. I was just concerned. Okay.
Okay. I believe that concludes the public comments for the public hearings, at which point we move forward to the matters of public interest, which are welcome to the board meeting. Anyone can address the board on any matter of interest in the watershed. Speakers will be acknowledged by the president. Please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Date your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Does anyone have any public comments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lindquist?
Okay. Yeah. My name is Tom Lindquist. I live on the east side of Duck Lake on 16750 Baywood Terrace. I'm a member of the Eden Prairie Duck Lake Association. And I'd like to just make a few comments based upon the workshop on the Duck Lake outlet that preceded this meeting. So I guess for a start, I'd like to give just a general perspective, having lived on this lake for many years. It seems in a way that it should not be too big a deal to just get back to the lake's performance as it has been for decades in the past. The idea of mimicking the past behavior of the lake is very appealing, and I'm hoping that there'll be a solution that turns up that perhaps our association can help discover that is simpler from a maintenance point of view, perhaps simpler from a railroad involvement point of view. But we're hoping that we can come back to a position very much as the engineers were working towards that has less maintenance issues, for example, than that one-inch V-notch we're. So again, the association is interested in working with any and all parties. I've begun myself to look into published papers regarding outlets for small lakes and how other people are approaching these things. And I hope that we can work with the watershed district and certainly also the DNR, as has been pointed out at that workshop meeting, to work towards a solution that perhaps no one has exactly thought of in the past. And with that, I guess I'll relinquish my time, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to comment? Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you. My name's Larry Cook, 471 Big Horn Drive, and Chan Hassan. So first of all, again, I need to state that I believe any action taken at this meeting is ineffective, illegal because of the violation of the requirement that managers fairly represent the various hydrological district. With respect to Duck Lake, I totally agree with President Pedersen. We spent more than enough time on this issue. Not that it's worthwhile, but we have a priority system for a reason that goes back all the way to the point where we adopted the plan. This project doesn't meet the criteria for, for a project, and we should stop spending money on this project, including staff time, until somebody wants to come up with reasons as to why this project would at least exceed the minimum 24 points required for a project on this basis. And simply because the railroad says no, and I think that just ends it. Otherwise, we're just wasting money for something that's not going to happen. My next comment has to do with the financials. I can't see where the cash balance is necessarily foot. On the financial report, there's no explanation. So I don't understand them on that basis. And then finally, also with respect to the financial reports, is the number of items where the percentages already expended exceed the proportion that would normally be considered to be expended for three months. And not that it isn't possible or appropriate, but there are no footnotes, no explanations as to why we're greatly exceeding those amounts, particularly troublesome as the amount spent on managers, et cetera, which I assume having to do with that. Also, I'd like to say on the regulatory program, it would be very helpful to include more of the applicable dates with respect to the various violations on that basis. Some of them have dates, some don't. And it just strikes me as that there's been a lack of effort to enforce these violations and proceed forward. So with that, that finishes my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lindquist has.
I think he, Mr. Lindquist, do you have any other comment? Or is your, I think he just took one hand down, didn't he? Okay, I think that's it. So I don't believe there's anything else, any other comments from the public? If not, we will proceed forward on the agenda. Next is the reading and approval of minutes. We're looking at approving the minutes for the March 5th regular meeting of the Board of Managers. We're looking at approving the minutes for the March fifth regular meeting of the Board of Managers.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the March fifth regular meeting minutes as written.
I'll second, but I have an amendment.
All right. What's the amendment?
Okay, page eight, line two seventy-one. It says trial, but it should say tried.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
It got us a friendly amendment.
Thank you so much. Any other changes, comments? Yes.
Just a discussion item is I really appreciated the information that was in here, and I think it'll be very useful for if you ever have to do a search to look for something.
Oh.
I thought it captured the discussion very.
Oh, good, good, thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, hearing nothing else, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the March fifth twenty twenty-five meeting with the one amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Next, we're to approving the minutes of the March fifth Board of Managers workshop.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the March fifth Board of Managers workshop as written. Second.
Thank you. Any changes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes for the Board of Managers workshop on March fifth, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. We're down to committee and member reports, and we will work on adopting the resolution after we have answered any questions on the committee and administrator staff, engineers, regulatory reports. Does anyone have any questions or comments from the board?
Do we want to have the citizens advisory minutes?
That'd be wonderful.
Right there.
Marilyn, are you reporting today?
Yes. So we had an excellent presentation from Josh Mackwell on the water quality report of the water bodies within the watershed district, which was very interesting. We, Sharon McCutter did her presentation on the, her report on the the Board of Managers meeting, and she was very excited about the Lori Heck's presentation. She attended the workshop too and reported on Lori Heck's presentation on the low salt design. And after discussing that for a bit, the C A C did make a motion to, to support in the future grants that would allow businesses and residences low salt design techniques. So if this wanted to be pursued by the watershed district, we'd support that. From there, we, we talked a little bit about future topics for our presentations, and I've kind of been on the agenda for that. I've got a presentation on benefits of native plants, and Liz suggested we have that in person. So we're having an in-person August eighteenth, I believe it is, at my house to discuss resilient landscapes with native plants. And everybody's, the C A C and whoever else wants to attend is very welcome. And that pretty much, we were kind of short, a couple of people, including our usual president. So Andrew was not there, so we, we kind of postponed everything else until hopefully he can return next month. Or this month, I should say, so.
Thank you, you have a question or comment?
I don't have a question, Marilyn, you said there was a motion, could that be added to the minutes for the C A C, please?
Yeah, it's in the minutes, but it's way down there. I, I, I did give feedback to Liz and Michelle took the minutes that it should go in that box instead of saying none. Yeah, it's way down, oh.
This is a suggestion, there's, there's two boxes, one at the top that says there's none and then one on.
So five B member reports, says Marilyn made a motion, yeah, that's where it is. I, I commented that it should also be at the top, and we.
Okay, good. And then just one little clarification, I don't know that it really matters, but just the, it says twenty-five percent of salt in groundwater is from fertilizer. And some movement in legislature to make a law to limit the salt in fertilizer, that's not what was said at the meeting. It does not reflect the conversation correctly. So it's, it's basically like fertilizer in general is a source of chloride pollution. And there was a legislator that somebody talked about who's very interested in chloride pollution, but he's not currently working on anything. So I, I just, I don't know if that matters, but it's not correct.
Okay, so you're talking about the last bullet point under B, the Board of Managers regular meeting?
Yes, yeah.
So is that a? So I understand you're saying it doesn't reflect your conversation, but is it a true statement or not?
No, they're both incorrect.
Okay.
Yeah, that's about twenty-five percent.
So.
Yeah, that would be very.
I was incorrect, I can't remember what the statements were.
So I looked up at the salt manual because it had a lovely pie chart, as I remember. It's like twenty-three percent of chloride, which is very, and salt, you have to also be careful and use the word salt. We use it colloquially to mean chloride, like sodium chloride, potassium. And all fertilizer, including putting manure on, you're adding salts, you're adding nitrogen, you know, ureas, salts. Everything is just a positive, negative ion, so you can't use salt and chloride interchangeably when you, if you're trying to be precise.
So on the statement that, was it twenty percent of salt?
In groundwater, it says, and we didn't have any comment of.
Or either?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just the, the actual from manual, twenty-three percent of
Chloride.
Chloride comes from fertilizer use. We can say that.
Yeah, okay. So I'm not sure what I said at the meeting, but it should have been that.
Okay. Well, that is a, I couldn't find.
Say that again, Dave? For manager Ziegler, so I can get it for my notes.
Manager Nelson, can you repeat?
We'll repeat it, so you could say twenty-three percent of chloride pollution comes from fertilizer use.
Okay.
That's, that's good to know. And there is a, the legislator who is interested in pursuing legis, you know, it's about one individual legislator who was very, I don't, if you know his name, you could put it in there.
Yeah, you guys.
Yeah. Faulkner.
Or you could email her the name.
Alex Faulkner.
I couldn't find that, Alex Faulkner.
Faulkner, good to know.
Was interested in pursuing legislation perhaps, or just, was, he was excited about it? That's what I heard from your comment.
He's, he's. Yeah, he was excited about working with the watershed on that and, you know, any other projects. He's a environmentalist. You look him up online, he's got pictures of him paddling boats, you know, canoes.
But I thought it was important who he was and what he's excited about, but I wanted to make sure we captured that kind of correctly.
For Senate District and State. I'm sorry.
Which Senate District is he from?
Forty-nine A.
Forty-nine A, the House Representative.
Representative.
Okay, other managers, do you have any other questions or comments for Marilyn and the C A C report?
House and Senate.
Okay, hearing none.
I, yes, I would just add, with regard to the regulatory report and the assertion of non-action with regard to some enforcement items, the permit on the agenda tonight actually resolves an enforcement matter. And just by the way, there's been very good progress made in the last month on a significant enforcement matter in conjunction with D N R at the Price and.
Price and Swanson.
Swanson property. And one other one we're also working on, so there's been very good progress on several, including probably the most high profile item, which is that digging in the wetlands at the Price and Swanson property.
Thank you.
Just to note.
Any other questions or comments, yes?
Administrators report, so yesterday, or actually this morning, I received a memo that Minnesota Watershed's put out on April first, and it wasn't a joke. We need to have our resolutions to Mennois by June second, which cuts it really close for us, so I'm going to ask for, to be able to go past the, our first June meeting so that we can have May to discuss, June to draft and bring them to you, and then get them to the board. So June second, then they'll have third, till June thirteenth to submit comments on the resolutions. July first, the resolutions will be emailed, and I'll send this out to the managers, will be emailed to each member organization, so that at the annual meeting in August, date to be determined, we vote on the resolutions as a full Mennois board.
Thank you.
That's what I call it.
Okay, anything else?
This is on the committee reports?
This is on the committee reports, yes.
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
This is on the staff report. Again, these reports are really, really good to figure out, you know, kind of what's going on behind the scenes without bugging everybody or you or. And so just a couple of follow-up questions on page five on the repair and maintenance fund. I'm just curious as to have we developed any approaches yes, yet in terms of dealing with repair and maintenance? It seems like that's a function we've discussed over past meetings, and it seems like potentially an area that the watershed could become a sort of a subject mattered expert for the various municipalities. I'm just wondering if there's been any action plan in terms of what's happening at this point?
President Peterson, manager Bell, at this point, there is not, but what I will say is Engineer Solbiak and I met, so I'm going to drop this turd in Mr. Welch's punch bowl right now, and he's going to love it. But our thought is, so at the May meeting, Mr. Welch is going to be speaking on just the basics of the regulatory program, what its purposes are. After that, I would like to bring to each subsequent meeting each individual rule to the managers to discuss the rule, changes that we've heard, not necessarily make the changes at that time, just have these discussions. We can progress through the rules in a, in an early fashion, subsequently meet with the TAC on each rules based upon the discussions that we have. Within that, one of the things that will come out of it would be maintenance, how would we want to, especially when we get to Rule J, I think that's where the cities are really looking for participation in the maintenance and operation.
Question, does the watershed district or the engineering firm have the expertise to do this?
President Peterson, manager Nelson, we would not be looking at doing the maintenance operation for them, we would be.
It felt like being the expert on how to maintain it.
Yes, we, we do, and those that we do not, nobody does except for the proprietor of the devices. So we would work directly with whoever has manufactured that proprietary device.
Part of the contract to install it, that they help support it.
Correct, correct. So we'd be looking at how could we best help out these people once we install them?
All right, you guys, you guys aren't pump experts or, you know, there's a lot of technology that's not necessarily a wildlife based.
Did you have any other questions, you did, go ahead.
One more comment.
Go ahead.
Just a comment on the very last page, professional development of the staff. Just going through the list, to me, this seems like a vital aspect of what we do with the staff for their development. It gives us a say on what's going on in the, in the region for all the different organizations we connect with. And it also brings back ideas. So from my perspective, I know some people might not think that that's a worthwhile activity, but I think that is a really important activity.
Thank you, yeah, especially in an area where there's always new technologies, emerging technologies.
I would agree with that, but also there's a chance to shape some things. If we've got somebody there that's speaking up and brings up ideas at work, that can sometimes self-influence what's going forward, so. Gives us a chance to really put in the door and help shape.
Re-exchange of ideas, yes.
Okay, any other comments on any of the reports in this section? Okay, yes.
So managers, manager Peterson, managers, to the degree managers have specific questions about the regulatory program writ large for this May presentation, feel free to email me just yourself or Terry or the two of us, and we'll make sure we address those, but it will be an overview of how does this fit? And what sort of authorities do you have and what don't, and kind of a status check before you go from there.
Okay, thank you, yes.
So I have some concerns about that because I think that we're trying to redefine some of the underlying assumptions for water quality and water cycle and, and ecosystem. And I don't know that what we've got in place in terms of rules. I mean, I feel like I want to just go and talk to the D N R and P C A or somebody because it's not. Some of that needs to shift too, to do a paradigm shift, and we're going to be able to do a paradigm shift. So I'm not quite sure how we involve that process, but I keep thinking I should bring it up at the Bowser Board meeting because I'm there with the commissioners because we see this as an issue. Especially when we left the meeting last month, so Vishoff said something to me about, well, the tribes are not happy with the fact that we're, I'm saying ecosystem services, or he said, I guess I'll have to use ecosystem functions. And the next day it was like, duh, well, yeah, because they see everything as animate. Animals and all of that whole system are how they define things. We talk about everything is inanimate, so we're totally got to disconnect. And if we're going toward an ecological approach, I think we gotta.
Speak the same language.
Yeah, or at least start, the agencies need to start thinking that way, and I think we're the ones that have to prompt them to do that. So it'll be interesting to go through this process because we obviously have to do this, and we gotta do it in a thoughtful way, but I don't know how we do that exactly.
President Peterson, manager, so that's one of the things Mr. Welch and I have talked about is that in some cases, there's, we're going to have to look at things and say, is the regulatory program even the right vehicle for doing this? Is it an outreach thing, is it a, you know, so, you know, that, that'll be part of the overall discussion. What can we really accomplish with the regulatory program, and what's much better suited to put into a capital project? Or an education outreach program or some other initiative? Yeah.
Right, and just our work with our partnerships. Because when you think of the water cycle, half the time it's in the groundwater, or it's being taken up by plants, things. So it's a whole different redefinition of water, totally, if, when you factor it in.
Okay, yes.
Too old.
I just a comment on the rulemaking process, if you're at the D N R, the M P C A. Ours looks like a cakewalk. I mean, we, it took us years to even do typo changes, and if you could even get those through. I mean, it's, I mean, just doing administrative cleanup only rules would take years. And there's objections. So we talk about doing this, and I think it's obviously a conversation, there's always somebody who takes rule suggestions and puts it on a list that people talk about, so, but the expectation that things are going to change is going to be, well, I mean, no, I, I'm saying the conversation, but the actual, in any sort of timeframe is going to be just to keep that the timeframes are much longer.
So our P C A commissioners come up in a couple of different places I've been, one at the tribal state relations training, and then I was on a, I got an Isawattan friend out in Pennsylvania, and they're doing some stuff with somebody presented from, he's working with the Ojibwe tribe. And he mentioned our P C A commissioner in his presentation, so she's doing outreach with the tribe, so I don't know what's going on there. But at the legislative meeting, Commissioner Strowman made a commitment about trying to do more, a culture of improvement, and trying to change things, so I think.
And anything that comes from the legislature is a priority, that is the place to affect the most.
But she's, but I'm seeing changes already, they're doing, the way it's some, they're defining some things for the forestry stuff, they're looking at a whole never, different way of looking at it ecologically, so. I know that, that I know.
We're not disagreeing.
We need to appoint a C A C rep, yeah.
Okay, how about first, let's work on adopting the resolution to accept the committee reports?
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash zero two seven.
Six. Six.
Not seven.
Yeah.
Quote, zero two six.
Zero two six, yep, yep.
I jumped ahead.
Yep.
Resolution twenty, twenty-five dash zero two six, receiving committee reports. Seconded.
Thank you. So all those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Next, we need to look for a board representative for the April 21th CAC meeting. Anybody's going to volunteer? That would be wonderful.
The date?
The 21st, April 21st. Okay, Jill's available? Okay, Jill's available. Manager Crafton will be there. Thank you, Manager Crafton. Next, we're looking at the consent agenda. We don't have anything pulled here, so our resolution is up for a motion at this point.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-027 to approve the following items by consent.
Seconded.
Thank you so much. Since it's the consent agenda, do anybody have any comments or questions? None, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting 25-027, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. We're on to new business. Now we're looking at accepting the February treasurer's report and approving payment of the bills.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-028, accepting the February treasurer's report and approving payment of the bills. Seconded.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25-028 for February treasurer's report and approving payment of the bills, please say aye.
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 None opposed. And now we are on to manager and council reports. Manager reports, does anybody, any manager have a report?
I have a report.
Please proceed.
So this is in follow-up to a couple of things I've mentioned in the past. I had a couple of meetings that I've attended in the last month. There was a Minnetonka State of the City, which I've attended a couple now, and I managed to meet again and speak briefly to the mayor and the city manager, natural resource manager Leslie Yetka, our old friend, and, and her boss, the Public Works Director Will Manchester, I met for the first time. Again, just showing a presence there, and I think they always seem to appreciate it. I don't know. A lot of people, so just handshaking, basically. Also attended a town hall by Representative Kelly Morrison. She's a freshman US House member from Minnesota District 3. That was about a week ago, and was in an auditorium at Thomas Jefferson High School in Bloomington, holds 1,200 people. They estimated about 2,000 people were at the event, and people outside could not get in yet. But just mentioning in the, in the context that she made a kind of a synopsis of what was going on and, and in her early days in the various committees that she's been shut out of to represent us in the House. But, but I guess it came around to talking, to me anyway, of thinking about all the federal funding and the many programs that feed into what we do. And I don't think it's apparent to everybody yet in terms of how that all filters down. All the monies that are being cut back or removed at the state level, and with the cities and various agencies, NOAA, FEMA, PCA, they're all being cut back. And I, and I know our reports we go through are referencing that kind of research all the time. So I'm not sure exactly how, you know, if we just stop the discovery of evidence as we go forward to do things. So anyway, I'm just saying it, it impacts our business directly here at the watershed, and I don't think we understand fully yet how it's going to impact. And then today with the announcement of the tariffs, I mean, I think our whole economic landscape is, is in a state of chaos right now. And I don't know how that plays out. So in terms of my continuing review and observation of how we do our accounting here, we've had, I've had a number of meetings with staff, with staff Jeffrey Monahan and Engineer Sobiak. I've met with Redpath staff, Bonnie Burns, Allison Hillman, Jessica Hord, all regarding our monthly accounting process, quarterly cash flow reports, and other Sage accounting options. Also, I've also spent time directly looking at the Sage accounting system, which is a software available for consultants as well as individual companies. We have a system, and in my opinion, it does not work. It does not work well. So some of the conclusions I've reached from, over the last couple of months in the meetings, I guess I've been looking at it from the context of trying to see from a treasurer perspective, not necessarily getting involved with the details of making it work, but from a treasury perspective. So while the work that we do is, works well enough to comply with our annual requirements as far as Bowser and the various state agencies, they get our auditors and others, they get the bones of our system so they can develop the necessary reports, and I think so that works. But in my opinion, our system doesn't serve us well at the watershed level. So we have, we have an, this is just some broad comments here. We have an antiquated patchwork, a manual and an electronic multiple handling of the same data over and over and over. And so we spend a significant amount of time just reconciling the data because every time somebody touches it, it introduces a chance for error. And if the systems aren't in place to catch those handling, we, we have a chance for error in the system, and it relates to how we regurgitate into the monthly reporting system. So I'm going to recommend that we do a complete review of our accounting system to bring it up to date. I think what we have in the past is, is a patchwork of systems that have, that have developed over time. And each time we add a patch, we don't necessarily see the full integration of how that patch works. And I, so there, I think we lose, we lose our ability to figure out what it is that's actually going on there. And it doesn't impact the underlying data, but it impacts how we report it internally and on a monthly basis. So I don't think it necessarily means that we will discontinue our current accounting services providers such as ABDU and Redpath for, for our audit and annual report. So in any case, I'm going to propose that we issue a RFP to consult with and try and get responses from several different firms that have knowledge in the governmental accounting area to come in and review our system, to do a more comprehensive view of what I've been doing over the last couple of months, make recommendations on how to make improvements. And I guess on that, in that context, I'll be talking more and bring it up at our upcoming Audit and Finance Committee meeting that we'll do sometime in the near short term before next month's meeting. That's what I have.
Thank you, Tom. Yes.
Well, I haven't talked to Tom because I can't violate the open meeting law, so I haven't. But I did make a comment to Dylan the other day when I was in signing stuff. But one of the things that was not, that wasn't, people weren't receptive to was for us to have an accounting kind of like QuickBooks or something. Well, but they have the invoices here. I mean, Josh orders something, the invoice comes, whichever, or whoever's ordering, whatever. And that information can be put right into an accounting process, and then that could be transferred over to Redpath. And that would eliminate a lot of what, what Tom's talking about because the invoices would be here. It'd have the information, you could put everything in. If there isn't an invoice number, you can come up with a convention, you know, the date and some initials of the company or whatever. But there are definitely, I mean, it is time that we started moving forward. It's just, that wasn't receptive to, to the staff and administrator previously. And so with other, some of the other challenges going on, we just hadn't moved forward on this. But I agree with Tom, it's really important, and I think that would just be a really simple way to help Dylan and everybody just move some of that forward. So hopefully that'll be one of the things that you're looking at in terms of what you're doing. Because it would be, it would eliminate two or three steps you're talking about.
Thank you. Yes.
So I just had one quick thing. I got a email from our Minnesota Watersheds Executive Director that, excuse me, mentioned that the Minnesota DNR is putting on a Zoom meeting about wake boats. And so they have some data they want to share. And the meeting's going to be 6:00 AM, April 16th.
6:00 AM?
Yeah. PM.
Yeah, 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 6:00 PM.
I wish they, I'm sorry.
The PM?
I think so.
Okay, well. Terry can probably forward the email to us all. Did you get the email, Terry?
I'm sorry.
Did you get an email from?
Jan.
From Jan about the wake boat.
Eighty-five of them, yes.
Eighty-five of them?
Yeah.
She's been busy lately. She's been.
I think at 6:00 PM, my recollection is at 6:00.
What was the date?
April 6th.
Yeah.
That's what I remember, just.
Yeah, she did. Let's see here. I'll be fine.
Well, it's been an issue.
There is. DNR petition, April 16th.
Okay, anything else?
Manager Ziegler.
That's all I have.
And I'm just going to say, on behalf of the Personnel Committee, we had a very wonderful update from David Drone and Associates about our compensation and salary structure. We've come up with some things we would like to do, and so we will have a lot more of that at the next meeting. So just so you're expecting it, it's coming. I believe that's it for manager reports. Anything on legal counsel reports?
I'm going to, sorry. Yeah, managers, I'll do this as quickly, as briefly as possible, and then if there's questions, we'll field them. But as you know, under, with support from this watershed and others, I've been engaged more on the chloride limited liability legislation effort. And there was a meeting in the last month with Senator Putnam, who is sponsoring a bill in the Senate. There is a parallel bill in the House, last I checked, which was yesterday or the day before. Neither of them is moving at all. The, the meeting Senator Putnam convened was, in my view, quite a good idea, which is get all the stakeholders in one room and say, what are we doing, guys? Let's move forward with this. I was not brought in to that meeting, and I'll leave that at that, which is unfortunate because it apparently devolved into an argument over the legal liability standards in the current bill, which, which are standards that the Minnesota trial lawyers have made clear they're just not going to go for. So it's, it's very legal tech, their technicalities and almost kind of groundbreaking kind of territory in the extent of liability protection that the landscapers are looking for. So right now, that's where it's stuck. I think the property owners have not really been engaged as someone who would have an interest and maybe a perspective that's a little more compromise-oriented to get something that works. And for reasons I'm not totally clear on, the agency, the Pollution Control Agency also hasn't been engaged. So I wish I had better news, and I'm glad to field questions.
All you can do is keep trying.
I think soon I'll be back here to recommend a different approach.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, this one, I'm just, I love an elegant solution. I thought we had one, but it's,
Not gonna happen.
It's not going, not yet anyway. And I do think that we really, really are running a risk of, I'm curious to hear about a legislature, legislator who I didn't know about, who's interested in, but we're risking burnout on the issue. I mean, they just keep asking, why is this not moving? Why is this not, you know? Why is it stuck? And, and it does get down into, we have water quality and water resource protection. People suddenly forced into position to talk about really legal nuanced matters of liability protections, and everybody goes, uh, not sure. So I will keep at it unless you say.
No, we continue to wish you the best of luck. So keep at it.
Forty-nine A, you got that right. That's what Alex.
I can find him.
Okay, our next item is the discussion of the two lawsuits, and I believe we need to go into closed session for that. Do we?
Indeed. I do recommend that, managers, the two suits are Larry Cook versus the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District, both counties, and Managers Nelson and Crafton. And the other matter is Mr. Cook's other suit against the watershed and a number of others.
So I'd be looking for a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the matters as listed by council.
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. We're in closed session. Okay, we are.
Back on.
Yes, I had everybody do that. We are now back and ready to end the closed session, which we've done. So do we need to say we are back in open session and vote on that, or just we're back in open session?
Back in open session.
We're back in open session. We have concluded the items on the agenda, looking for an adjournment.
Would we adjourn?
One second. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, thank you. Look at this.
Eight twenty-five.
Eight twenty-five.